I'd like to call this meeting to order. And we'll need a motion to go into closed meeting for has it be resolved that Board of Supervisors hereby enters into closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the following. Section 2.23177, consultation with legal counsel and briefings from staff members or consultants pertaining to actual and probable litigation for such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating and litigating posture of the public body, and consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by public body regarding specific legal matters requiring provisions of legal advice by such counsel. The two items under that would be Elliott Creek Road abandonment request and Falling Branch Park and Ride Lot.
And if I can amend that, the second item, the Falling Branch Park and Ride Lot, should be under subsection 3 and not under subsection 7. So we just, it'll still be in closed session, it's just under the wrong subsection.
And discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for public purpose or the disposition of publicly held real property for a discussion in open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. And that would be Old Blacksburg Middle School, Old Blacksburg High School, and then discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, discipline, or resignation of specific officers, appointees, or employees of any public body. And that will be an appointment, I guess, to the Alcohol Safety Commission, New River Valley Community College, RRC, and DC Council. Do I have a motion placed?
Just in regards to the BASEAP, I am currently the chairman of the BASEAP board. So when that discussion comes up, I think I'm going to step out of our closed meeting at that point in time because I just don't feel comfortable that here I'm serving on the board and now I would be picking someone who would be serving with me on that board. So up until that point in time, I just wanted to bring that to the attention while we're out on the record.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Set it.
Second. Have a motion in the second. All in favor going into closed meeting?
Aye.
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 We call the roll real quick for you, Vicki. Need a motion to go out of closed meeting?
Set it.
Second. Have a motion in the second. Would a clerk please call the roll?
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Chairliff?
Aye.
Set it.
Certification of closed meeting whereas the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas section 2.2, that's 3711 of the Code of Virginia, requires a certification by the Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors, oh, that's right, the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law was discussed in closed meeting to which the certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in a motion conveying the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board. Do I have a motion?
Set it.
Second. Have a motion in the second. Would a clerk please call the roll?
Well, beforehand, I would just like to state for the record that I did step out when there was a discussion regarding the BASEAP board appointment due to my conflict of being on that board and being the board's chair.
Okay. Sure the clerk is duly noted that. And we had a motion in a second. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
For the time that I was there, yes.
Mr. Tuck?
Yes.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Curry?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chairliff?
Aye.
Set it.
The next thing on our agenda would be invocation and pledge of allegiance. We will observe a moment of silence to reflect on the business at hand, and after that, Mr. Meadows will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much.
The next item on our agenda is a resolution, and it's for former police chief Wendell Lyncham. And I don't think I have a copy of it. I think I can read it from her, and maybe if you guys want to come over.
Yeah.
(coughing) 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 (coughing)
Well, the next thing on our agenda is a delegation. It's Mountain View Humane, spay and neuter efforts in relations to cats in particular. Oh, my, the kitty cats. We still see more cats than we can imagine. It seems like every time we do another thousand or so, we think we're going to start seeing it slow down, and it doesn't. But we're making as much headway as we can. So I wanted to give you guys a little update on where we're at. So some back history for folks who may not have been here when I've been here before. In America, we spend $2 billion every year catching, housing, euthanizing, and disposing homeless animals for an average of $250 per animal. It's huge, huge amount of money that we feel is a waste. For every child that's born, seven puppies and kittens are born, and I always like to laugh about that when I see somebody with their new baby, and I think, oh, you should take seven puppies and kittens home with you at the same time. Somehow, nobody ever thinks that's a good idea. But it's a bigger problem than we can fathom. Overpopulation is certainly not just an owner problem, or a shelter problem, or a vet problem. It's a community problem, and we like to serve in that way. So thanks for being a part of the solution. We believe 100% the solution is aggressive spay and neuter. The more animals we can spay and neuter, the fewer animals that are produced, and the fewer animals that end up in shelters. Sterilization is the best defense, and it also minimizes health risks and costs for caring for unwanted animals. To date, the clinic that we run here in Christiansburg, the Walden Racy Spay and Neuter Clinic, has done over 18,800 animals. That sounds like a lot. 48% of those lived in Montgomery County at the time. So roughly 9,000 animals that live in Montgomery County have been fixed at the Spay and Neuter Clinic. Studies have shown that for every thousand animals fixed, about 500 fewer animals will come into shelters over time. Now, of course, since we don't have kitty shelters here, we don't see quite the same numbers, and we can't really document the same numbers because so many of what we fix are kitties. But we know without a doubt that we're making an impact on the number of animals that are free roaming and the overpopulation problem in general. So with the funding that we got from Montgomery County for the last two years, we fixed almost 2,500 animals, 2,454 cats. A lot of those cats, and we'll get to the other number in a minute, but a lot of those cats were free roaming cats. That's an average of $24.45 a cat. Anywhere else that you can fix a cat for 24 bucks, I'd be happy to see it. We do as much as we can to keep the price as low as we can. So we're fixing 10 cats compared to the average cost of housing and feeding and euthanizing one cat, and we're pretty proud of that. So through partnerships, we took some funding we got from PetSmart Charities, some funding we got from the county, some funding we got from Humane Society, Montgomery County, and some private donors, and by partnering all of that together, we fixed almost 3,800 cats just in this one program that you guys helped start. And so that's really important to us, that we keep the program flowing and that we keep adding to it. 1,477 of those cats were cats that were trapped, meaning they don't have a home, and a lot of them you couldn't get near if you wanted to. So we trapped them, ear tipped them, so that whenever they're seen again, you can tell that they've been fixed and they've been rabies vaccinated. So we want to continue to say thank you. All of this is not possible without you, and that's the most important thing to remember from tonight, is all of this is not possible without you. So of course, we do want to maintain that, and we want to continue the program. We will continue also to see matching contributions for other rescues. We do have one entity that is looking at doing some matching funds this year. I won't let the cat out of the bag. Ooh, probably shouldn't have said that. I won't let the cat out of the bag though, and tell you who that is yet because it's not firm. But we are working on some matching contributions, and so we thank you very much for everything that you've allowed us to do for the community. 18,800 animals is a lot. Yes, sir. Kelly, we're really proud of the work that you guys are doing, but if it was a short message that you could convey to the public how they could help out in this deal? Yes. Please do so at this time. Since people watch the rebroadcast, and it's rebroadcasted in the towns and things, I think it's a good opportunity. We have some great programs coming up, and this one will probably blow the doors off the clinic. In April, if you trap a cat and bring it in, the first 350 cats that come in and trapped and get fixed are free, 100% free. They get fixed, vaccinated, and ear tipped for free, the first 350 cats. And not only that, people will say, well, I have to go buy a trap to do that. No, you don't. I've got 200 traps to loan out. So we take care of everything except for the actual labor of going and getting the cats. So we're looking forward to that. That starts April 1st. But more than anything, the best thing people can do is take care of their own pets and get them spayed and neutered, because the primary reason we hear females getting fixed is because they've already had an accidental litter. And the primary reason we hear males getting fixed is because they've already been next door and visited their neighbor's female. So we want to try as much as we can to get ahead of that curve and help people get them fixed before they have that happen. We do everything we can to keep the price as low as we can. We have aid funding available at all times for people who are in the low income brackets, but our prices are around $70 and below, even at the high end. So anyone who needs help getting an animal fixed, we are certainly their first stop. Thanks for that time for a plug. Okay. Questions?
I just want, well, we brought our second cat to you in the fall, autumn, that came out of the tree, and I just want to compliment you on your professionalism, the care for the animals, you know? Once you get them over there and you get them back, and answering questions, and it's okay to call to check on them, and Autumn is doing fine, and she's an inside-outside cat, so.
Good.
Yeah. And so I just want to thank you. I've told other people about it. They're amazed that they can go there. And I know for a fact that some people have come to you that would not have gotten their animal neutered or spayed.
Right.
Because of the cost. But once it was explained to them how to go about it, they have come to you.
And so much of what we do is education. We have so many folks who don't know even how to take care of their animal after surgery that we get a lot of questions about that. So we went to the extent of making a video, and you can watch it on the web, or you can watch it in our lobby, and it's how to take care of your animal for the next seven to 10 days. And we're doing something similar with how to trap a cat, because believe it or not, there's an art to it. And if you're not good at it, you would get a raccoon, a possum, a rabbit.
A skunk.
A skunk. Oh, yeah, we can do that. But even with cats, there's an art to it, because you can have 17 cats, and 16 are fixed, and you're trying to catch that one. So we do everything we can to try to encourage people to try new things, and for us to help them is all we can ask for. So it's exciting. If you've never trapped a cat, I highly recommend it. Other comments from the, questions from the board?
I just want to echo Ms. Biggs, and just say thank you for all the work.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly, for that update. We move now into the public address part of our agenda, and I'd like to say that you have five minutes. Come to the podium, sit your name and address, and please direct all your comments to the board. And there's a little light that will come on when you get close, and when the other light come on, it's time for you to quit. So the first person.
I like the way you said that.
Yeah, the first person is, I think it's Luther Woolwine that signed up tonight.
My name is Luther Woolwine. I live on Craig's Mountain Road. Just wanted to say a couple things. As a kid, I had a friend that lived on the road in Question, and we played in those waters down there. Also, my father was a farmer. We hauled hay on those roads, so I would really hate to see them closed. I was down there today. You know, it's beautiful, and I would hate to see it closed anyway. Thank you.
Thank you. Eddie Woolwine.
Good evening. My name is Eddie Woolwine. I live at 2492 Glade Drive in Christiansburg, Virginia, and I'm here tonight to express my opinion of, I'm against the closing of Elliott's Creek Road from where it connects with Allegheny Springs Road to Sugar Grove. As you can tell, my father just spoke. Our family has a long history down in that area. It has a historical significance to me and to our family. The road is not unsafe. As my father spoke, we traveled it today. I've traveled it many times. That part and the other part that goes to Rogers. It's a road that has historical significance to us and to a lot of people in the area for the purpose of researching local history, visiting the family cemeteries that's down there, and there are quite a few, and also performing genealogical research. So I appreciate your time and appreciate the opportunity to express my opinion. Y'all have a good night.
Mary Ann Cap.
Good evening. Thank you again for this opportunity. As I know, this is the final moments, and I wanted to express a few more things. The Elliott Creek Road issue is a property rights matter where the public right of way is in jeopardy of being stripped away from the public for the benefit of one private party and at a great cost to the county and loss to the county as a whole. We need to be mindful of the Constitution of Virginia. We need to be mindful of the Virginia Code and the Bird Act that spells out the powers of VDOT and the county. The Dodson whip request fails to show adequate justification to abandon the public road, and this would harm the rest of the county. What is true here is that this road has been a necessity and in use for hundreds of years. What is true here is that recently it has been obstructed to create a false impression that this is not for public use. It indeed has necessity for access to and from Shawsville directly for jobs, hospitals, schools, or wherever anyone wants to go, even if they just want to view the autumn leaves. This is not a popularity contest. This is a democracy. The majority of the local community and many from beyond have expressed via petition, where approximately 100 signatures have been collected, and majority of the households in the immediate community and various letters that I know of express the desire that the public wants to keep this a public way. I ask that the board vote on the facts and the truth for the well-being of Montgomery County as a whole, because this vote is probably the most profound vote you'll make here for the history of the county and for the current well-being of the county. The county will either suffer or thrive based on your vote here tonight. So I ask that you please deny the Dodson whip request to take away the public road for their own use. Please vote in support and preservation of the public way for the people. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Karen Witt.
Good evening. I'm Karen Witt. I live at 2292 Elliott Creek Road. To summarize reasons for my request for the abandonment of Elliott Creek Road is concern with public safety. The road is hazardous for public use. It is not safe by nature.
public wants to keep this a public way. I ask that the board vote on the facts and the truth for the well-being of Montgomery County as a whole, because this vote is probably the most profound vote you'll make here for the history of the county and for the current well-being of the county. The county will either suffer or thrive based on your vote here tonight. So I ask that you please deny the Dodson-Witt request to take away the public road for their own use. Please vote in support and preservation of the public way for the people. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Karen Witt.
Good evening. I'm Karen Witt. I live at 2292 Elliott Creek Road. To summarize reasons for my request for the abandonment of Elliott Creek Road is concern with public safety. The road is hazardous for public use. It is not safe by nature. There are three major sections of the road that have bluffs on both sides and blind curves. The road is too narrow to safely pass, not only for two vehicles but for one vehicle and pedestrians. What would happen if kids were walking down the road and met a lost delivery truck who was having difficulty turning around or backing up? Or running to partiers at the end of the road? Or drug dealers? It could be too narrow to even walk by the trucks, or even what happens if a rock boulder loosens and tumbles in their path. If you meet another vehicle, it would not be difficult to just back up a few feet on a level section of the road, but very difficult to back up 200 to 300 feet on a blind curve or beside a bluff or cliff section of the road. Sections of the road floods regularly, including the culvert at the entrance. There is no way to turn around to the end of the dead-end road of the current maintained section unless trespassing. It's also difficult to turn around at that dead end. The discontinued section floods regularly, landlocked by order. Vehicles must forge the creek 375 feet at one end and 75 feet at the other end. This section is unsafe and unusable for travel. There is potentially an environmental impact on creek habitat such as the rhinocla perch and the medallion fish. Unfortunately, traffic has increased since awareness of the request. In fact, last weekend on March 15th, a car travels down the road and finally comes out two and a half hours later. Curious of what they were doing? Yes, me too. But advised earlier to avoid confrontation, so I am not going down the road to investigate. What if that car went over the embankment? Got stuck in the creek? Needed assistance? Kind of on the fence here. Do I take a chance and check it out? Or notify the Sheriff's Department for assistance? When the deputies arrive, has a vehicle already left, seriously injured, trespassing, or just hanging out in the creek? For potential future usage, I believe that when public necessity exists for the continuance of the secondary road and Montgomery County has the avenue, eminent demand will prevail. In our care, this section will be maintained and will be in no worse condition than it is currently. Upgrading to a larger culvert would be a good start. I want to thank all of you for taking extra time and effort to consider my request. I am hopeful you have a better understanding of how unsafe, either by having the opportunity to travel the road or viewing the two videos. I strongly encourage the board to approve the abandonment request for public safety. For the remainder of the time, does any one of you have any questions? Thank you.
I think it's Glenn Accord.
Hello. My name is Glenn Accord. I live at 1260 Boheal Road. I'm in the Sugar Grove community, which has passed the roadie question. But my concern is actually with the rest of the road getting to that point and past it. From where the Harcops ends on Craig's Mountain Road, I live like three and a half miles past that point, and the road's been in very horrible shape for the last several years, I guess, as far as improvements. Since any improvements have been made to the road. I moved down there in 1992, and since that point, we've had one road improvement, which I think it made one mile, which was like four mile to me on the gravel road. Since then, no improvements have been made, and it seems like the state has become less and less involved in maintaining the road and as far as grading and upkeep of the culverts and whatnot. Also, we've had two significant floods since I've been down there. This past February 4th last, we had a flood that washed the roads out, and they came back and made it passable, but then it was, they really haven't been back to improve it to the grade that it was beforehand, you know? The culverts need to be upsized, and I'd like to see it paved further down the mountain at least to a point where it's not so hazardous with some guardrails installed and whatnot. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience tonight who didn't get an opportunity to sign up that would like to speak at this time? Yes, sir. Please come forward and say your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Yeah, my name is Bill Mintz. I live at 1855 South Franklin Street, Christiansburg, Virginia. I used to go down that road with my dad many years ago. I've been down that road, down through the creek, all the way down to Allegheny many times. I've been down through there in 1978. I was trying to go down there to deliver some hay, 55 barrels of hay, to a farmer down there. And I didn't have no trouble, didn't have a bit of trouble. The creek's easy to get across. Everything's easy to get across. You can get by on that road. It ain't nothing for me to get by anything. I can drive anything. I can get by that road down there easy. Now, if you got a guy down there who built a fence across that road, which is illegal, you're not supposed to cut a road across, I mean, a fence across a public fireway. But 1978, I was trying to go down there, and there had a truck broke down on the Sugar Grove Road. I couldn't go down. So what did I do? I went down to Allegheny and went through that one and come down to Sugar Grove. This road, if you've got an emergency vehicle down there that can't get out, if you have a fire back toward Christiansburg on the Sugar Grove Road, how are they gonna get out? How are they gonna get anywhere? There's only one way out of that place. Do you take places in Christiansburg and block it off so they can't, they ain't got a one road out of the place? You know, consider if the rescue squad goes down there and there's a lot of people down there in bad shape. What if they can't get out the other way? Think about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Hello. I am Michelle Alley, and I live at 2602 Sugar Grove Road. Again, I would like to express my opposition to the closing of the historical Elliott Creek Road in Montgomery County. My family and I have lived in Sugar Grove community for over four years, and I've walked hundreds of miles annually on this road, on this beautiful and inspiring corridor. I have never felt unsafe on this corridor with my children, my dog, my son-in-law, my daughter-in-law, my cousins, my mother, my grandmother. I have never felt unsafe. A couple of weeks ago, I testified here to request that you not abandon this Elliott Creek Road. I've been a little concerned that maybe what I had to say has been misconstrued, maybe by you, Mr. Tuck. So maybe I just need to address this to you. Again, I testify before this board that we enjoy the walks down here, and we have never felt it to be unsafe. I would not walk or ride down this road if a vehicle, and the vehicles have came down while I've been walking. We saw the vehicle, never felt it unsafe. If we needed to stand to the side, it could pass. We could view it. We could see it. It's a long corridor that you can see, a lot of visibility. I also testify that I have years' experience running rescue, not only running rescue, but serving as an ambulance driver and having my license to run the crash truck. I do not find this road to be unsafe, and as a certified ambulance driver, I would not hesitate, not once, to transport anyone across that corridor. I have been on a lot worse roads because time is of the essence. I spoke of that before. Last year, we did have that severe flood that the gentleman talked about. I think it was at the end of January, February of 2013. And I was involved of Swift Water Rescue to one of my neighbors where the water did get up to their doorstep. We put their three dogs under. We covered. We had rope. We tied ourselves off. It was quite an experience down there in the Sugar Grove Boheal. And if it would've got any higher, we really would've needed the Swift Water Rescue to come over and to help us. I have children, and I know many of my neighbors have medical conditions down there. When I worked at the VA, I served several of the veterans down there. They had knee replacements and surgery. We took ice to them. We took water. We did respite work for our veterans that couldn't get out of the community. We have, that is a quick corridor and access to the rhinoc where the trauma center is located. We do need this road for direct access to Shawsville and Salem now and in the future for work and school, for myself and for all the children in the area. Thank you, and I hope that you'll listen, be nonpartial, and remember to be more inclusive than exclusive. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Seeing no others coming forward, we're gonna close our public address section of this meeting. And we have an addendum today. Mr. Metis?
Yes, sir. We do not.
No addendum, and we move on to the consent agenda.
Subpo.
Have a motion?
Second.
And have a second. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Bev?
Aye.
Chair Ryan?
Aye.
Senator Hines?
The next item is old business, subject A, petition to seek the abandonment portion of a portion of Elliott Creek Road resolutions to deny or support. So I'll open it up for a little discussion among the board.
Do you want discussion before the motion of one of them, or is that what you're?
Well, I'll take a motion first, and then we can discuss after whichever one passes. Okay. It can be, I guess, the first one can, I guess it can be a motion to support this resolution denying the petition for abandonment of a portion of Elliott Creek Road.
Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion denying the petition for the abandonment of Elliott Creek Road.
Okay. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Now we're opening it up for a little discussion.
Can we just restate exactly what part of the road we're talking about? Because I think it gets confusing in some of the discussions.
That's what's stated in the resolution. Whereas the county has received a petition from Karen Dodson-Witt seeking to abandon 1.54 miles of Elliott Creek Road, State Route 677-5, from the intersection of Craig's Mountain Road, State Route 674, heading east along Elliott Creek Road for 1.54 miles.
Okay. Thank you.
I have something to say here, and I'm really confused a little bit because anyone that has been down that road and went all the way through to Allegheny, looks like to me, from what I've seen when I go down there in the last year or so, you didn't go down there. Trees have fell across that road, and there's no way of getting down through there unless you take your chainsaw and cut the trees up as you go. And that bothers me when we've had several people come and speak before us and tell us that they've been all the way through there, and I could've had a look, and it's impossible. I think several members here have been down and looked and have said the same thing. I really, I just don't understand that aspect of it. I mean, all we need is general facts, and somehow or another, we're not getting them.
Mr. Creed, I've been down and went to the creek, and it was really like going through a jungle on the other side. I mean, and I agree too. I listen to people saying that they go all the way through, and I'm sitting there like, well, they got to go by helicopter or something.
You don't do that.
Because even if I seen a track or road or path, you know, it would give some kind of indication whether it was a vehicle or not, or whether it was a hiker or somebody just observing the site, because it was like a real experience.
A few things. One, I've gone out and dived the property, I think, like the majority of the board. When I went out there, it's clear to me that the road is not safe for vehicular traffic. There's no way, the only way that you're going to be able to pass is to trespass on the wits property. And so then it looks become, what do we look at the road and the purpose of the road? There was, and I think I said at the last meeting, there was one lady who got up and said, "This is our Huckleberry Trail." And for being able to walk, I've listened to what the wits have to say, and I think that they've been good stewards of the land. When you go out there, they have done everything that you would want a farmer to do. They fenced off the waterways so that their livestock doesn't get into the water. They've beautified the area. And in some ways, that's made it more desirable for people to go out and see the beautiful things that they've done. And so, at the same time, I'm weighed by the statute, and as I understand the roadway is not just for vehicular traffic.
That's right.
And that's the trouble I'm having. And I'm weighed, the wits person of safety, because if they have an emergency and a rescue vehicle goes out there, and I'm out there enjoying myself, I'm out there and I meet that rescue vehicle, am I gonna have to back up? Is the rescue vehicle gonna have to back up? Am I putting then the wit's safety at issue? And so, for me, I'm looking at it as a public safety issue, and really, it's the wits because they're the only residents that live out on that road. I agree wholeheartedly with everything that Mr. Creed said. I've got a four-wheel-drive quad cab truck. Now, I know that in that video, that the wits put their four-wheeler into that creek, but I was checking. I would not put it in there. To turn it around, I probably trespassed on their property because a quad cab is hard to get around, and I did my best not to trespass on their way. There's no cul-de-sac down there at the end of it. And so, and the video shows exactly what Mr. Creed has talked about, is the trees and everything down. Nobody's been on that road in a vehicle for years, and it looked like the cable was rusted from the video and the light. So that's where I'm struggling. I would like to hear from, maybe talk this thing through, but it's a very close decision for me, because I do believe the wits did know what they were buying. They bought those both tracks land, and they knew that there was a public roadway. At the same time, I'm concerned because there's no way this county's gonna have the money to widen that road and meet the needs of all our citizens, millions of dollars to be able to get it up to speed. And if we're going to keep it as a public road, I put out to my fellow supervisors as a question, do we not owe it to the citizens that are on that road to make it safe? And so, I just, that's where I'm at.
Well, I went on the road, and I went on the other part of the road that's across the creek that we were talking about. I'm not sure, I mean, you can walk on it, but I don't know how a car would go on it because, I mean, I had to climb over trees when I was walking on the second part. But we're only talking about the first part. We're talking about the part that goes to the creek. And I know that I probably also did trespass in trying to help my husband with backing the truck back up to get up. My concern is just looking at the road, and it's my understanding that you can't just say, "Well, the road can be for hikers." It has to be open for everything, like vehicles, or hikers, or horses, or whatever. And I, like Mr. Tuck, struggle with this thing about the vehicles. I just didn't feel safe myself in the vehicle. I felt safe on my feet, but I didn't feel safe in the vehicle. So that's, and, you know, the only two houses I saw along the road belong to the wits on that portion of the road that we're talking about. So I come at it just looking at, I saw what was around there, and I saw what could come down, and I saw the trees, and I know that, you know, if they fall and all that good stuff, I mean, I know VDOT's supposed to come out there, but it just, to me, didn't make me feel safe when I was in a car.
Todd? Have comments? Well, I'll make one or two more. You know, safety, and I'm on the road too, but have to look at it this way. I'm not a, I guess if I was in a sworn in court as a safety official, my opinion might mean something as a safety expert, but my own personal opinion is that I wouldn't want to travel that road in a vehicle. Now, if you got used to it and done it every day and so forth, it probably would be okay. Then you have to consider any historical value of the road. We had our staff and our people look for history on the road, and I don't think we can really verify the person that became a quadriplegic in 1999. They said it happened, but there could be some circumstances there. That person could've been intoxicated, could've been on a full, what you call them?
Full.
Full wheelers or something, you know? There should be some circumstances out there, and, yeah, ATVs, that's what it is. And, you know, you look at it, I'm very mixed about the decision that we're gonna make tonight. One way, you know, you say that the public should be able to enjoy it on bikes, walks, and whatever. On the other hand, the wits have property on both sides, and you look, that it's no cul-de-sac down there to turn around, and people go down and do whatever they say they do. And we even looked to our Sheriff's Department to ask them for records that they may have had on the road of vandalism, trash, and so forth. We talked to our emergency services coordinator, and, you know, he's, and we just asked his opinion. He said any time that you have right-of-way going back, that the right-of-way should be kept open. And so, I have a tendency to agree one way, because you get in, if you have, I guess, a forced fire or something down in those areas, you gotta get equipment to it, and I'm sure that you could cross private property to get to the fire, but there's some things there. And as a look at the section of the law, it seems like it's some things that apply that it wouldn't be a good decision for me to vote to close it. Well, do we need a motion when we are the other, if we have?
I think we have a motion on the floor to deny it.
Okay.
Deny the closing.
Yeah, deny the closing. And, man, we have a second too. So, y'all ready for the question? Okay. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Tuck?
In making my vote, I would like to express to the wits, if this was about harassment and the harassment that you've had to put up with, it would be easy. I would be voting to close it. But in looking at this situation, I'm saying that this is an asset of the county, and I don't believe that at this point in time, it is in the county's best interest to close the road, and I am concerned about your safety. I would like, I hope that at some point in time, we will revisit this and we'll take another look at it, and I would be open to that. But at the same time... But at the same time, I do think that it is an asset of the county, and before I give that up, I can't just do that for the reasons there before us at this point in time. I would like to keep track of any of the police calls that you have to deal with, any of those type of things. I think that would help me to have a better idea about public safety. And so, I would vote in favor of the motion that's before the court to deny the road abandonment.
Mr. Gager?
Just briefly, I'm going to vote aye in favor of the motion. I will just say, however, that I'm deeply unconvinced by some of the arguments that have been marshaled in favor of denying the request. I'm making my vote solely upon my understanding of the way that the code reads in this particular instance, and upon nothing else in this case. If it were on other factors, I might vote differently, but, so my vote is aye.
Mr. King?
I'm going to vote aye, and I just want to say, I just can't lightheartedly give up the right-of-way that Citizens Montgomery County owns. And like Mr. Tuck said, later on, we can come back and visit it. If we have more data on incidents down on that road, I'd be more than glad to come back and visit it.
Ms. Biggs?
I'm going to vote no.
Ms. Perkins?
I'm going to vote aye, please.
Mr. Creed?
There's a couple of things that I want to mention here before I vote. One is, I'd like to know what the true width of the right-of-way is on that road. If it's, you know, we've got roads that are 10 to 20 foot. Some of the old roads are only 10, as little as 10 foot of roadway. Some of them are 20. And there may be some that are more than that. But by the school, by the school, by the Department of Transportation, going down there and actually cutting off an end of this road, and saying they're not going to do anything with it anymore, but they're just going to leave it there. And for all these trees that are down already across the roads, and all the others that are going to be down in the future, it certainly makes it impassable with a car or truck unless you've got a fire saw and can get out and cut some trees out of your way. And I am going to go ahead and vote aye on the motion as it has been made. But I would like to see these things, because without a cul-de-sac at the end of that road before it goes across the creek, it's virtually impossible for a vehicle to go down there and turn around without trespassing on somebody's actual land, rather than just the other one, the right-of-way. And that is something I would be very interested in knowing. Thank you.
Chair Brown?
Well, the first thing I want to say, I appreciate my board members here who's really, really struggled with this decision. I appreciate you going out and looking at the road for yourself, walking down the portion that we're not talking about, as well as the portion that we're talking about. And I know that there has been some inner struggles within ourselves in dealing with the situation. You would think that we, the way we dealt with this is that we're going to, we voted a budget for $100 million or something like that. But when you look at it, it is serious. And people in the audience, we take these things serious. And I'm going to have to, from some of the previous things stated, and some of the things that I've stated, I'm going to have to vote yes to deny the petition.
Okay, I have six to deny and one no. So it's deny the petition.
Okay, we'll move on to new business. So, subject A, resolution accepting the conveyance from the Montgomery County School Board of the Shawsville Elementary School property.
So move. We have a little discussion on that.
Well, let's clarify what we're talking about.
Okay, it says, whereas the County School Board of Montgomery County adopted a resolution on February 19, 2013, declaring with certain conditions, the Shawsville Elementary School property surplus, I guess it's property, parentheses, the school, the property surplus, to its needs since the conditions no longer apply to the school board is ready for now convey the property to the Board of Supervisors. And it goes down on in the resolution, the school board has requested the Board of Supervisors to be able to use the proceeds if the Board of Supervisors sells the property as a portion of the funding to reduce existing school debt, capital school improvement projects, or be used to fund debt service for other capital school construction projects.
Okay, Mr. Creed?
Let me state while I read all that.
Should we? We've got a motion and?
We need a motion and second, I believe, to begin discussion, don't we?
You made a motion, I need a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and second, and it's open up for discussion. It's on the floor. That's great.
And I just have, it's a very simple question. It's not something that's, it just struck me as something that I don't quite understand. I'm wondering why they would bring things from Auburn or Reiner over and go all the way down to Shawville, when we've got an empty school set in Christianburg. I don't know.
I do not know the answer to that.
It seems to me like, you know, you should be going to the place that you use the less gas and the less man-hours and stuff like that into it. And I just wonder why that would be. If somebody can ask you that, I'd be more than glad to.
The only theory I have is that old Shawsville Middle, the old Shawsville School is open, it's a very open space facility, so they may have more room to store stuff, but I don't know.
Got an home gym over there.
Yeah, that's true.
Right near. I just, I don't know. Kind of baffling, when they say they don't have any money, and then they do stuff like that.
Mary?
I just have a question. All right, so, they will, when we take this over, there's stuff that isn't going to be in there, right?
That's correct.
And number two, when we take this over, then are we responsible for making sure it's maintained, not broken in, making sure that the heat and the cooling work, so it doesn't maldo, in case you're going to sell it with the building? Are we responsible for all that when we take it over?
We can add insurance on it too.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, so, when we take over a building, we don't let it just sit there and sort of fall apart? We maintain it, and we make sure that?
We minimally.
I guess I just don't want it to happen, what happened to Old Blacksburg Middle School, if we're going to try to sell it.
We minimally maintain it. We keep it in a basic condition, but once the property surplus, we'll be back to you with a recommendation very soon to move that property forward, just like we are working on something to bring forward to you about the old school administration property on Junkin Street too.
Yeah, one other thing. And I guess, the school up in Christianburg here that is vacant, they have no, as I know, they have no plans.
No, the, some of the discussion with the schools about the old Christiansburg School that was used for the Blacksburg Middle School is they want to continue to retain that property until they determine the master plan for the Christiansburg Strand, that study that they're doing. At some point, they may be looking at renovating or replacing other schools in the Christiansburg Strand, and they may want to use that as a temporary facility.
And I was hoping there was some explanation such as that, and maybe for Auburn, they may be moving to it in case they're not finished with their building that they're remodeling. But I'd like to have seen something, saying this while I'm on the floor.
That's been, I know that's been discussed in a conversation. I don't know if there's anything formal to that effect.
Any monies that we spend to keep it up, if we take it, do we get reimbursed first?
Yes, sir. When we take ownership of the property and maintain the building, we do get reimbursed for our expenses once the property's sold. That is correct.
Okay. Are we going, what Ms. Biggs said is that no longer can the school board use the school to store property.
That's correct.
Okay, so I just got that.
That's correct, unless they ask us, they can still ask us permission to use the building if needed.
But what they advise is that they no longer need it for storage, and that's why we brought this to you now. When, back in February 13 is when they surplus it, but they had it full of stuff in the Auburn project, so we didn't touch it.
Okay, and the other question, it says, resolution of the Montgomery County School Board declaring its intention for the disposition of the Shawsville Elementary School building and associated property located at 4390 Rift Street, Ellison, Virginia.
There are ball, there's recreation space, ball fields attached to that property that were used by the elementary school. They're continued to be used. Our Parks and Recreation Program uses those fields now. So, they have been under the ownership of the schools, and we've had a right to use them. That'll all come under the ownership of the county, and in all likelihood, when we recommend to the board disposition of that school building at some point in the future, we're going to also recommend to you that we look to retain those ball fields, because they're an integral part of our recreational activities.
Okay, all right, so, everything that's located around that building. All right, then, tell me this. I, and I think I may have asked this before, we are planning to demolish that building?
No, ma'am.
Where did I get the idea that there was money out there to do?
That's the old Shawsville Middle School annex that's across the street.
Right, now, what are we, we're talking about the big?
We're talking about?
Shawsville middle that's over in the flood.
Elementary.
The elementary school.
All right, so, the middle school there across the street, that's the one that would be, we are planning to demolish at some point in time.
That's going to be done?
Well, we're talking, the school board has money to demolish the annex that's across the street from the middle school. But as far as I know, we don't have any plans to do anything with the middle school, because they're still actively using it as the middle.
No, not the middle school, but I'm talking about that annex across the street.
Yes, ma'am, we are going to, the school board has money in their budget, or there's money set aside for that to be demolished, yes. They've got to come back and get that appropriated, but?
Yeah, I know it was there, but it has not been appropriated yet. But that was in the plans to do that. Okay, so, we are talking about the school down there that's open, that's close to the river, and?
Yes, ma'am.
Or the, whatever, I guess. All right, that's fine, thank you. I just wanted to clear that up.
Any further discussion? Have a second and a motion with this?
No.
Huh?
You do.
Okay, have a second and a motion. Would the clerk please call a roll?
Mr. Gager?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Subject B, proclamation for National Library Week. It's a proclamation, National Library Week, from April 13th to April 19, 2004.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call a roll?
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. Gager?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Subject B, wait a minute, I got there. This thing moving, moving on me a little bit. Okay. Subject C, proclamation, National Child Abuse Prevention Month. Child Abuse, proclamation, Child Abuse Prevention Month, April. They don't have any weeks in there, I guess, oh, it's a month, April 2014. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Would the clerk please call a roll?
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. Gager?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay. Subject D, proclamation, Local Government Education Week. Proclamation, Local Government Education Week, April 1 through April 7, 2014. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
And second?
Have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Yeah, I'd just like to, you know, I think because we're so busy, we sort of forget that this comes up. And really, you can do a lot of stuff with this. You can actually, I was reading like how some county governments do stuff with the school systems, and do stuff with students, and really get the word out on, what does county government do? And I was thinking, I know it's probably too late, you know, this time around, but maybe for next year, we ought to think about, maybe there would be something we could do during that week to coordinate with schools, or maybe, I don't know, community groups, whatever, but, you know, like Education Week, you know, and where it's like, we're letting it pass by, and we're not doing anything.
Well, we actually did something, when was that, Ruth? Week before last, when we had the Gilbert Linkus, we had all the third graders from Gilbert Linkus over. And we were, we were ahead of our time, but that was part of the thing, was to educate them about local government and how?
But you can have like people follow you around in your job, like especially high school students, like our middle school could follow Craig around, or Marty around, or Carol around, or one of us around, or come to a meeting, or, we could do something to make it more like Education Week. That's just my personal opinion.
Well, they, years ago, they used to do the senior class. You had so many, which, I know the town of Blacksburg, when I worked there, we, the whole senior class would participate in government day. They would help them walk trials and all of that.
Oh, that's cool.
And because, I mean, I had four, like shadowed me around all day long, and they were in different, then the manager's office, the mayor, and so forth. But seeing like the, I don't know whether SOLs created some time problems and scheduling and so forth, but I can't think of the lady's name that I used to coordinate that. You remember that?
It was like Anna Perkins.
Yeah.
And Ms. Finch did it too, didn't she?
Yeah.
For a while? Did Karen Finch do that for a while?
She did it afterwards, for years. Actually, Sandra Sumner and I did it together, because we were the two government teachers. And they would fight to get, to get to your place, and to ride on the?
Fire trucks, huh?
Yeah, the fire trucks.
Yeah, we always treated them good, took them to Burger King, McDonald's, and stuff like that.
Yeah, right.
Have a, any further discussion?
You could take a rest.
I was going to say the same thing that Ms. Biggs said. What are we going to do to educate the public? Not only high school children and elementary children, but what about just the general public? And I think those, those things, we just need somebody to really coordinate that for next year, to look at all aspects. Because there are a lot of people who come to us to speak at our public address, and they don't really understand how the tax system or the roads are funded, or a lot of other things. And I know Todd has talked about this too. And so, it would be so much better if we could figure out ways of taking to each of the strands of the school, to the general public, as well as to the school students.
I'd be happy to put, I'd like to see that put on the kind of to-do list for next year.
I really would too.
Yeah, that's good.
No further discussion? Your time, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. Gager?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
After all that, we're ready for the county attorney's report.
No, we've got to do volunteer.
Oh, man, there's so many on there, wait a minute. I'm glad, I'm glad, you know, I just done that to see whether you guys was paying attention or not.
I'm supposed to keep you on track.
Okay. Proclamation, National Volunteer Week, from April 6, observation, observe from April 6 to April 12, 2014.
Motion.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion on it? Would the clerk please call a roll?
Wait a minute.
Okay.
We are having, you know, the leading lights to volunteer, you know, it's all about volunteering. And I really would like to see that we do something about that too, the volunteers, and somehow or other, make their, make it known among people. I know we do know some, but we're talking about? , too, um, the volunteers and somehow or other, um, make their, make it known among people. I know we do know some, but we're talking about fire and rescue, and, uh, we're talking about RSVP and any, any way that a person would volunteer for, um, helping a neighbor, it's hands, helping hand.
Okay, uh, don't want to off subject too much, but what I want to do is, as Chris brought it up, talked to him a little bit, even talked to you a little bit, and talk to the volunteers at the commission to see what they thought about it and how they think that we ought to go about it. Should we recognize one, two, or one from each of the 10 people?
Right, right. I mean, I think there are so many ways that, I know several times we've brought in fire and rescue people, um, but there are other groups, uh, that work through the county that have many, many volunteers, and it's, um, you know, the giving back to the community, just like the, the big event that's coming up at Tech where you could, uh, ask for people to come and help you do certain things. Um, I talked to three young students, um, at Tech, and they were, they were happy to be doing what they were doing. It was a service, you know, fraternity, and so you would think that kids who get that organized and the people with it, that should also be something that's well-recognized because I, I was so impressed with these young people, um, because they really wanted to do what they were doing. And it's almost 8,000 of them from Tech that will be doing that in a couple of weeks, but we've got them everywhere, all over the New River Valley, so, anyway. That's another thing we need to kind of put on our to-do list. Uh, it keeps growing for some reason.
It's, it's, it's long, it's longer than we would imagine.
I know, I know, but anyway, thank you for letting me say that.
Any other comments? Madam Clark, you up?
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Is it okay if we get the county's attorney's report now?
No.
Okay, you got the full body.
I have no reports.
No report, okay.
Me too.
Okay, county administrators' report.
Just a couple of quick items. I hope everyone had a chance sometime last week to enjoy some of the activities that were, uh, associated with the Crooked Road Festival that came to Montgomery County. Um, had the opportunity to attend the event Saturday night that was at the Moss Arts Center, and, uh, did you get to the one in Shawsville, Gary?
No, absolutely.
Oh, okay, well, I understand. Uh, there were, there were, there were more events, especially at the end of the week, than you could cover, but, uh, they were all, we got a report from our tourism director today. They were all very well-attended, uh, had many, many positive comments, and, um, certainly appreciate Jack Henshaw Wood and all the folks associated with that organization bringing those talents and, and that exposure to Montgomery County last week. It was a very good event. Also, want to remind everyone that we have our first of two community meetings tomorrow night at 7 o'clock at Christiansburg High School. Um, we do plan to go forward with that event unless we have treacherous road conditions. I'm sorry, I don't know, I don't want to jinx it. Uh, you know, depending on the forecast, but, um, if for some reason, um, there's a need to cancel that event, we'll let everybody know, uh, by early afternoon tomorrow, but right now, everybody's planning to be there tomorrow night at 7 o'clock. Our other community meeting will be held Tuesday, April 8th, and that one will be held at Margaret Beeks Elementary School, also at 7 o'clock. Uh, so both those will occur before our next board meeting because our next board meeting is April 14th, but I did forget the budget public hearing, which is Thursday, April 3rd at 7 o'clock, and that will be here in this room. So several opportunities to come forward and express your thoughts and concerns to the board. Uh, the presentation tomorrow night, we have a brief overview, um, about the county and its budget, uh, but the focus of both the community conversation meetings are for the board members to have the opportunity to discuss issues with the citizens, so that's, that's what we leave plenty of time for. Mr. Chair, that's all I've got for this evening.
Well, I'll add one more to it. Somebody may have this, this on their calendar, our special joint meeting with the town of Blacksburg. Uh, it's, we'll schedule for April the 10th, but since a couple of our board members can't make it that day, we're looking, we're seeking another date from the town of Blacksburg because it's, uh, their call and, and on the date and the place, and so if you're looking forward to coming on April 10th, please put a little line through that, and we will have a, a future date, uh, for you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask, we were still willing to meet on the 10th, but I think they wanted all our board to be present if possible, is that correct?
Yes, that's what I understand from the mayor.
Yeah, the mayor contacted the board chair and the, uh, manager also mentioned to me that they wanted to, to find an alternate date, so...
And personally, I'd like to have, uh, those two...
Me, too. Everybody there.
I'd love to have all of us there if possible, but again, we had said anytime, anyplace, anywhere, and so I, I wanted to make sure that they were the ones asking us to move it and not us.
Yes, okay.
Mr. King?
I'm awake.
Oh, you're awake.
I just got one, might say one thing, uh, I just want to tell, uh, everybody here, I appreciate everybody coming out, taking our time to come to a board meeting and express your opinions. It's very important that we hear from you, and I hope you come back every once.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, and I'm sure we hadn't said it, but all the people up here share the comments that, uh, Mr. King just expressed. We really appreciate you coming out because sometimes we hate to sit up here and see empty seats out there. We like to see an audience, okay, concerned citizens. Uh, Mr. Creed?
Yeah, two or three things. Uh, I went to a school board meeting this past week, and, uh, school board has agreed that they will not tie down the lights, the bleachers, the scoreboard, the dugouts, all the concession stands at, at the old, uh, high school field. Uh, other thing, uh, I want to say, we certainly appreciate our volunteers, and as far as I'm concerned, the volunteer is probably the most important thing that anyone can do for their county, state, or country, so, uh, time is, is precious. And, uh, the only other, have one other thing, and that would be, kind of in conjunction, might be the good time to talk about it, when the school is longing to, uh, use the old Shawsville Elementary School. I certainly don't know what we would do if we didn't have those three ball fields in behind them. They're used for morning and tonight. Uh, all three of them are on go with the smaller kids, uh, up to about, uh, 12, 13 years old, and we might, I hope, look to see if we can't make sure that we purchase those and do whatever it takes to, to get them, uh...
Well, it says associated property, I think.
There, there's just, there's just no more land out there to be had down there, so if we don't try to take care of that, you know, and it's, sitting there in the flood zone, what else you going to do with it? So it's probably the best time we'll ever get to have a piece of property with, with softball fields on, uh, to get started, so appreciate if we get something going. That's all, thank you.
Okay, Supervisor Perkins?
Oh, I really don't have a report, thank you. I'm just glad to be here.
We're glad to have you. Okay. Supervisor Biggs?
Um, yeah, I want to say, um, thanks to the volunteers, too. I wish there was some way we could, I mean, I know we have hundreds, but it'd just be nice if we could just reach out to every one of them in some manner from the board and, and thank them for everything that they do, because without them, we wouldn't have a lot of things done that we sort of take for granted that are being done. Um, also, I know that this will, this will be know, but has anyone heard about the guardrail on Brush Mountain yet? If they haven't, if someone from the, um, office, please call VDOT and see when they're going to do it?
Sure.
Because I said I would bring it up every time, and by the time it's done, it will probably be the middle of summer, and nobody will be going off the mountain, but if I don't bring it up every time, it might not ever be done.
Be glad to follow up.
Supervisor Tuck?
A few things. One, thank you for, my fellow supervisor for putting up with me tonight. I, I am under the weather, um, and I appreciate y'all not, uh, putting me out somewhere away from everybody.
Oh, Lord, if I'd known that, I'd been asking for him to go somewhere.
Um, second, in regards to the meeting at Christiansburg High School, one of the reasons I hope that people will come is when you come before us, uh, and it's our turn to listen to you, when you become our, but come before our board at public address, we listen to what you have to say because you're stuck, you've got to listen to what we have to say afterwards. At these community conversations, the whole plan is for give and take and for us to talk with you and help provide some answers, and so I would hope that some of the community, weather permitting, uh, will be out, uh, tomorrow night at Christiansburg High School in the auditorium at 7 o'clock. Um, Matt brought up a, a point about the, the parks and rec, uh, and, and roughly the study, I think we, total study cost between that and the library was $60,000. I was wondering if we could approach Virginia Tech and maybe the master's or doctorate program to see if they would be interested in evaluating our parks and rec system and that where we would, wouldn't be able to, or wouldn't be required to, to spend $30,000. If, all we have to do is ask. They can always tell us, no, that's not something that we're willing to do, uh, but I know that many times that there's been parts of Virginia Tech who've reached out in, in the community. Uh, they do a lot of different things from student teachers, uh, as well, and so to me, that would be a way to, to hopefully avoid that $30,000 being spent there and maybe being able to spend $30,000 on equipment or, uh, ball field or, or something along those lines.
And Chris, I think that Virginia Tech did help the library before under John Muffo's leadership, so that, they've actually experienced some kind of thing like that before.
And I didn't mind making the library part of that as well. I, I just was thinking parks and rec.
Let me just offer a word, word of caution is that, I was on the library board, and we had, um, we had some, some students help us with it, with a needs assessment, and that particular assessment was a marginal use, so...
Yeah.
You, you do have an issue about quality, so it is quite possible you could get something very good, and possibly you don't get something very good, so...
But if it's free, but, well, that's, that's, that's one of my favorite words. Um, and so I, I understand, though, you're, you're right with it, when, um, and then finally, at, at the last meeting that we had, um, I, I got in a little bit, uh, I guess there was a discussion about the Affordable Care Act, and I wanted to bring in the, the first letter that I got in October, and I wanted to read off the, the first, and, and I know that y'all had just had that second letter, uh, before you, and it starts off for over a decade, "Members of certain professions, associations, the Virginia State Bar, Virginia Society of Public Accountants, the Medical Society of Virginia have enjoyed, enjoyed sole proprietorship provisions from Anthem. Unlike other businesses which are required to maintain two or more employees at all times, these professionals could enroll in group health insurance products as a group of ones. Under the Affordable Care Act or healthcare reform, coverage provided to sole proprietors under these associations programs will no longer be available as group coverage starting with renewals in 2014. Anthem will notify groups 90 days prior to the renewal date and will urge them to enroll in, as individual coverage through us at your agent broker, and they do agree to be my agent and broker for no cost to, but to go out on them. I would ask that this be made of heart, both the first letter, I don't think I gave it, uh, and, and then the follow-up, which was the October, the, the 1st."
Copy. Okay, is that it?
Yep, that's it.
Mr. Gabriel?
Uh, just two brief things. Uh, first of all, I'm very much looking forward to the community meeting tomorrow night. I do want to let you know that I might be a little bit late. Um, my son is doing a comedy act in his elementary school talent show, so it will probably last about 30 seconds, so it's going to be pretty quick, and, and I'll be there on time, but I might be just a few minutes late, but I'll be on my way, so I'm going to want to make you aware of that. The second is, um, recently received an email from, from a constituent about, um, this new initiative, Solarize Blacksburg, um, and I was wondering if we might be able at some point to have Solarize Blacksburg come and just talk to us about their initiative and see what, maybe there might be benefits that might benefit other county residents that, that we could take advantage of, so I would ask that we, we invite them to do a delegation at some point in the future, and that's, that's all.
Just to answer that, you know, they have been around to a lot of different places getting up, and they have gotten solar down now. Uh, you can get more panels than what you could like eight years ago or so. You can get about twice that many panels and less cost than what they were paying for that at this point, so, uh, I'm actually seriously concerned with my house.
Well, we've had, we've had discussion with building services staff here, I mean, we've got a nice big flat roof that we could catch a lot of sun with. We've talked about that, too, but when we looked at that shortly after I came four and